...individuals coming to this country as a family unit are in fact a family. We have to do our job. We will not apologize for doing our job. We have sworn to do this job.
Family separations result from zero tolerance policy of prosecuting anyone who crosses the border illegally. News and Defense are asking Congress to pass a law allowing prosecuted migrant parents to be kept with their children. Hope this deals up for a possible vote this week. But addressing issues that President of the American Academy of the US says what's happening at the border, a launch to child abuse, calling grasses and children meet their parents. Special Counsel Robert Mueller is looking into a meeting in 2016 between longtime dumb Trump friend Roger Stone and a Russian man who played dirt on Hillary Clinton. That meeting was recently made now to Mueller's team. Stone says, "We just forgot about that 20-minute meeting with the alleged Trump supporter."
But we wanted to help come. He just had his rounds. He really thought Trump's election wasn't important. I get why. And he said, "I know where this information can be gotten, but it'll cost you $10 million."
...special meeting turned down, says he would never pay for political information. Studies says he thinks it's a setup because the Russian man was an FBI informant. And the Foreign Minister of Central African Republic says retired German tennis star Boris Becker does not have diplomatic status in the country. Becker claims his unpaid role as Central African Republic's sports attache to the European Union. Gets a diplomatic immunity from bankruptcy proceedings in Britain. Traffic from the health of SoCal Honda Traffic Center problems in Van Nuys.
405 North down, four Sherman Way, we're a crash landing in middle lane, center.
Rock scales and no, geez, too surprised by that. It's gonna be heavy over the Green River. And then once again, approaching the 15 into Verona. You're gonna be on the brakes and almost all the way to Riverside. Pretty choppy pattern on that stretch. South 15 loaded up now from the 91 through Cahalko. Engine in action. Visit superwoman, superlawyer.com. Mike O'Brien, KFI in the sky.
At the time, the roadway's pretty tough on the 405 north down slowly, sleepy 405 Center Drive taking you ahead all the way to Westminster Avenue. KFI in the sky. Help sketching there faster. I'm Agent Martinez.
Yo, ballin' in your weather. Next.
Hey, guys. Justin Turner.
And Courtney.
What fired up about this season? Dodger baseball?
And a lot of things. It's been a big year. Just got married.
Got a house where we can relax, hang with our friends, play with our dog, Little Moonshine.
And got some huge help from System Papers.
According to design, the interior, but the backyard needed help.
I can do everything around here, babe.
And that's where System Papers came in. Multiple sketches with lots of options. And Ruth showed up on time every day, gave regular updates, took care of every little detail.
Totally no stress, and their designs were fantastic.
Our backyard is like our own private oasis now.
Plus, Little Moonshine has a perfect spot to lie in the grass and sunbathe.
Justin Turner with yet another spectacular line.
Create your own private oasis. Go to System Papers.
Backyard's so gorgeous, your house will be jealous.
That's kinda cute. Did you make that up?
Sell pound 250 on your sale and say System Papers.
That's pound 250, System Papers. Pound 250, System Papers. Or go online, systempapers.com. And it's full chat approved. My tractor's lights is on the 6615.
The financial one, 22 spectrum business down, down 103 points today, Nasdaq 65, 65 hundred. Thought I came down, maybe a appropriate kitchen utensil or gift. And, uh...
What'd you get?
Uh, it's asking me, really nice.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, okay.
Is that right?
It's about a piece of time.
Kind of in scratch, it's off like the line of lemon.
That's it, man.
Yeah. We can put tests in.
Everything, food and drink.
How was your, uh, father's day?
Uh, it was okay. I was promised, uh, breakfast and bed, so.
Oh, honey, yeah.
Is it promised, then?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Uh, I'm about 12:30. I sort of ventured out to see if I could get myself some food. I pulled a cereal in.
(laughing)
I was starving.
So your breakfast is, uh...
Uh, I thought it would be a breakfast and bed at 9:30. And, uh, around 12:30, I, uh, started looking around.
You had a smell of bacon.
So it's, uh, foraging for myself. No, I went downstairs. They were all cooking. Everyone's cooking breakfast. It was pretty cool. And I had the greatest bacon, hash browns, and I, in, um, English buff, you could ask.
Sounds good.
Yeah. I loved it. Uh, well, we have a tradition at my house where I go out to home people and buy myself something, and then I have a trip in it for this.
And what did you buy?
Uh, I bought a, uh...
A desk script?
No, I, uh, uh, I bought a hammer, isn't it? So I can break anybody's bed. So I can break their stuff.
Oh, okay.
No, I bought a, it's, uh, it's hard to explain. It's a blowword, lead back. It's from Torah. Electric power. It adds such leaves up and, uh...
And it blows the socks.
Yeah, exactly.
I bought, I have the blower.
Yeah, but all you need to, they have the one that sucks leaves up.
I know, but it did have, like, attach a bag to it.
Attach a bag to it, and then it's got a big nozzle that cleans up the water. It's great. And so you run into, uh, it's on pieces. And then it chops that up and like throws that around.
It's like a filter or something on it?
Uh, you notice when you hit a, uh, pieces, there's a message, and it keeps the whole unit at that point. Then it's time to unplug it and spray it down, take it apart.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What'd you do, Vali? I thought you were married. You got, uh, Juliana?
Yes, we, uh, did, uh, we're gonna make John breakfast in bed as well. And I set my alarm, but it woke him up, and so he made us with the breakfast.
So that's your happy Father's Day. What time do you wake him up?
6:00 AM.
Oh, my God. Wow.
Get up before he does because he gets up really early, babe.
It's awesome.
And he goes, "Let me guess, you're making breakfast in bed." And I'm like, "Oh, my word."
Man, next time, tell you, like, Saturday night, go to the Ritz or something, you know? Just get out of bed.
Yeah. And then we're gonna go see Incredibles 2, and it was sold out.
Well, I know why it sold out. Because, uh, people wanting to learn, see if it, uh, if an epilepsy seizure occurs.
Right.
Yeah, that's what's, uh, going on out there. I mean, we've been in an incredible amount of money, buying an incredible mansion also, but that'll do with seizures from, uh, from the flashing lights and this. I'd like to say, I don't know, maybe, uh, Philip, uh, is easily attracted.
This is starting with moviegoers warning each other on social media, not Disney. Pixar is asking theaters like this one, showing Incredibles 2, to put up warning signs for people with epilepsy and other photosensitive conditions.
Well, at least you'd know if somebody's lying to you, you know? If they're, if their signals have, he doesn't say that they're sensitive to life. Take it to that movie and, uh, take it first bit, then see if that is true, or if the guy next to you is lying to you.
Incredibles 2 might be the perfect first movie for a little look up through. It was really good. It was really cute.
It seems like this one.
(inaudible). Sound like the guy who played Matt, dude. Is that him?
Are affecting more than just the characters. People are tweeting the stroke effects that they're abused, hypnasia, or worse, drug or seizure.
(inaudible).
So that's the result. I walked out of the theater with a hydra. That's why blogger Veronica Lewis tweeted Twitter.
Because everybody's got a condition nowadays, you know? And when I was growing up, nobody had any letters behind their name, like ADD or ADHD. You know, your mom would just say, "Hey, what's wrong with that kid? She's got a condition." Right? That would say it for everyone. Everybody had a blanket, uh, blanket truth. "No, she's got a condition. Keep her love. Don't walk on her tracks."
So that's the result. I walked out of the theater with a hydra.
That's not cool, but, but I don't know if it's fault that is, you know?
That's why blogger Veronica Lewis tweeted Twitter in a thread that's now gone viral. The edge we asked him to see had Pixar want to do as their character says.
To make some wrong things right.
She makes it clear she thinks the stroking lines are a cynical part of the plot. She just wants viewers with photosensitive conditions to have a heads up.
Oh, my God. Everybody, now, everybody has to act.
Seen the warning.
Have you?
Yeah, like on, uh, I don't know. I can't remember if it was on, like, online or in an app.
Right.
Even on the posters in there, there, there's signs. I didn't even know this was a thing until I saw the signs a few days ago.
You remember when you used to be on an airplane and, uh, you know, the stewardess would give out a bag of nuts? That would be cool. Now, you can't do that because, you know, some, uh, you know, some guys could have a problem with their phone.
You know, the guy?
Oh, you do?
Who are the guys?
No, not me. My ex. She tried my allergy. No, my daughter has like a peanut, uh, intolerance. Not an allergy.
If everybody could, uh, find their seat, please. I appreciate it. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start the Los Alameda City Council regular meeting on June 18th at 6:00 PM. Uh, city clerk.
Do roll call. Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Great, thank you. Uh, can I ask everybody to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Councilmember Murphy?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks that you allow us to live in this country where we can all come together, give our views, discuss as friends, and try and come up with the best government for ourselves. As always, we ask your protection for our fighter fires, firefighters, police officers, and service people around the world. Amen. Thank you. Can I get the council to join me down there?
My sister needs her ride home.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, we've got a lot of presentations to do, so we're just gonna go and get right into it. Uh, what I'd like to do first of all is I'd like to start off and ask a couple people to come forward, specifically Cameron Toh and David Quintanilla from Casa U Shelter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, uh, when we go ahead and recognize these folks, I would like to see maybe Pamela, you wouldn't mind joining me up here? Yeah. So, full disclosure, and this wasn't something I've been pushing for, but it's something that had to be done, is I'm also on the Casa U Shelter Board, and, um, uh, tonight, we're gonna honor two really special people that have done a lot, and these are the youth in our community. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what they've done, each one of them, and then we're gonna give them a commendation. Uh, first of all, Cameron Toh. Uh, Cameron's been with Casa U Shelter Youth Leadership Program for over four years. Uh, she's been on the leadership board for three, community outreach chair, fundraising chair, and she's now the president of YLP. And YLP is the Youth Leadership Program. Um, so, a little bit of an editorial. So the Youth Leadership Program, being a board member, every month, we go and we get to hear Pamela talk up this group like they've never been talked up. And what they're doing is that they're going out there and they're basically connecting to all of the youth in the different areas. Not only at the high school and trying to get people involved, that to make sure that the people that are out there that may have problems, but also they're going on outreach tours to hotels, motels, out in the community, really to try and just connect with all these different people that are out there. So this is a, this is a shelter that is out there to try and help kids that are on the street. And part of the process is doing the involvement and the outreach. The other part of it is to make sure that, uh, once they actually get help, that we can help reunify and help provide support to them. So, um, and I'm also gonna have Pamela talk a little bit about what they do. Cameron has been doing this, she's a leader of 14-member leadership board. Uh, she provides general supervision of all YLP events, and she acts as the liaison between the board and staff facilitators. Um, she currently leads over 70 teams in business meetings and outreach activities for Casa. Uh, she's a natural leader. She's the ability to bring peers together and focus on projects, and she's accumulated over 1,500 community service hours with Casa for the last four years. Lastly, uh, she's headed to UC San Diego, where she's gonna take a super easy major called Cellular Microbiology. Yeah. So, good job. Yeah, yeah. So on behalf of the city council, we would like to give you this commendation. Truly, thank you. Okay, next up, David Quintanilla. Uh, David's been with the Youth Shelter's Youth Leadership Program for four years. Uh, he's been on the leadership board for three. He was a member at large and a community outreach chair, and he's now the vice president of YLP. Uh, as the vice president, he plans to preside over all the team building activities, leadership activities that go on while maintaining his role. In addition, he's a primary liaison between the YLP and the Orange County Department of Education's Friday Night Live partnership. Uh, he can be trusted to lead our youth, uh, volunteers and fund and in times of sensitive training. He's, uh, accumulated 442 community service hours. I gotta stop there. That's awesome. And, uh, he, over his four years. And he's headed to Butler University in Indianapolis, Indiana, where he's gonna go major in sports management. So Jerry Maguire here. I don't, oh, there it is. Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, on behalf of the city council, we just really appreciate both of you guys' leadership in the city, and, uh, it really starts with you guys really leading by example. And, uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So Pamela, I've sat through these board meetings at seven in the morning, so briefly, don't get too far out there, but, uh, why don't we talk a little bit about YLP? Because I also want the community to know what goes on. Yeah, Chief knows how this can go, too. We, we love you. We do.
Well, I, I, I thank you, uh, Mayor Edgar. I wasn't prepared to say something, and I'll keep it brief. Thank you. For those of you who aren't familiar, um, as Mayor Edgar has said, Casa Youth Shelter has an amazing high school volunteer program. So if you have any local high school youth that you know who would like to give back to their community, we'd love to welcome them with open arms. Youth can create change and awareness on issues. Um, and for us, it's regarding the shelter and youth-based issues. These teens are learning about human trafficking and drug use, and they're learning about child abuse. And then they're going out into the community and educating and advocating on behalf of the youth, who are too in crisis to really, um, know how to educate and advocate on their own behalf. And so, um, I would just like to thank the city council, uh, Mayor Edgar, for allowing this type of recognition for these extraordinary young people who give so many hundreds of hours of their time where they could be working at a job that pays them money, not pays them in community service hours. And they could also be doing a hundred other things, and instead, they, they chose the passion of Casa Youth Shelter to lead into the community. And, um, I can't wait to see where you're gonna go in the future. And I'll end there. Thanks, Troy.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Uh, the next presentation is, I'm gonna ask Chief Acosta from the Orange County Fire Authority to come up and join me. Community, this is our fire chief from Los Alameda.
Can you see it again?
So, uh, every year about this time of year, we, uh, we go through and we do a proclamation to the city, and, uh, this proclamation is on drowning prevention awareness for people that have swimming pools in the backyard and, uh, and all of the activity of really trying to make sure and just raise awareness for what's going on. Uh, I'm gonna ask the chief to talk a little bit about this week and why it's so important, uh, that we, we put the message out there. So chief, if you want mine.
Sure. Well, drownings are something that the CFA really, really feel are, we're proud to, to have a drowning awareness program. The drownings that we have, we, I'm sure you know, recently, we've had a high-profile drowning in Cota de Casa. That just not only packs a family, it packs a neighborhood, extended family, and the first responders. So it's a message that we wanna deliver. Uh, we recognize May through October as drowning, uh, as water safety awareness. Um, I got a couple of stats here for you. In 2017, there was 101 drowning incidents with 45 fatalities. That's just in Orange County alone. So, yeah, that's a lot. Um, it's a leading cause of death in children under five, and we encourage all your residents here to visit the local fire station, pick up some pamphlets that have information packets, as well as some water watcher tags. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I also want to acknowledge on our council, uh, our council, we actually appoint somebody to serve on the Orange County Fire Authority Board, and, uh, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Hasselbrink. So, uh, she is actually our board member, and she's actually vice chair of finance committee now. Yeah, so, uh, you know, what's really been an honor being on this council is that each one of these council members up here get involved. They get appointed to a county board, and they get into a leadership position, and it really sends a good light of what's available here in Los Alameda. So, Shelley, I just wanna say thank you for everything you do, too. Uh, chief, on behalf of the city of Los Alameda, so I want to proclaim drowning prevention awareness, May through October, and, uh, we just wanna thank you for coming in here. Thank you. All righty. like to call up, and two of them, actually. Um, I want to make a presentation commendation to Mark Zito, who's the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of ICE for Orange County, and his boss, uh, Don Barito, who's the Deputy Special Agent in Charge of ICE for this area. Uh, if you guys wouldn't mind joining us. Thank you. So this is a very special night for me, um, you know, to be able to have the opportunity to, uh, give a commendation to, uh, great leadership in homeland security. A couple weeks ago, I had the opportunity with Mayor Protem Kusamoto to go to the White House and meet with, uh, the Homeland Security Secretary Nielsen. And, uh, when I was there, I could not say enough about, uh, Assistant Special Agent Mark Zito. Um, this is a guy that a real stand-up guy, uh, lives in the community, uh, part of very, has a very important mission. And, you know, anybody that's been following the sanctuary law issue, this is not a political statement, but this is a fact, that as a city, we're the only city and state of California that can actually have a direct relationship with ICE, at least until it gets overturned by lawsuit. And what was possible was, um, you know, when you get to the point and you're starting to deal with this, the honesty to the community is, do we have a problem with immigration in the community? And the answer is no, we don't. Um, I want to take the opportunity, you know, one more time, that, you know, when we're going through this process, this issue was about local control. This is about, we as a city, we're given a charter by the state of California to be able to form a city, form a police department, and charge our residents general fund money to be able to build a police department. And the express right that we have as a city, as a charter city, is that we can actually set priorities to what our police do. So SB 54, from our perspective, basically took that right away from us as a city, and that's what we stood up for. And when that time came, Mark Zito, Special Agent, Assistant Special Agent in Charge of Orange County, was somebody that I was able to reach out to and get educated on what some of the larger cities are dealing with, the complexities that this law brought into effect. And between him and Chief Nunez, who has been a partner with me through this process, too, really tried to get a better understanding of both sides. Um, so, you know, for me, uh, you know, Mark, I just wanted to tell you thank you for everything that you've been able to do to help educate the process, to be able to make sure that we're not saying stuff that's really not appropriate when it comes to the, the serious job that you guys have in keeping us safe. And, uh, we just really appreciate the partnership. And, uh, with that, I just wanted to, uh, be able to provide you a commendation on behalf of the city council and as mayor of the city of Los Alameda's, and thank you for all the efforts that you've done. Thank you. So, so Mark, the other thing that I want to do, uh, is, uh, this is something that is very special, is that within our city, uh, what we normally do is, uh, give tile plaques. And, uh, that's something that, uh, you know, for us, it's a big deal. So I, I hope that you'll be able to take this back to your office and, uh, to show your staff. And, uh, I also want to say to your, uh, your boss, thank you so much again for the support. I, I can't tell you enough, and, uh, maybe he'll let you share that plaque. If you really like it, I, I'll get you another one. But, uh, but again, and, uh, Mark, if you wouldn't mind, if you would like to address anything with the community, that'd be great.
I, I think small enough. I could talk. I'd like to thank the mayor. I'd like to thank the city council for what it be...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for the time and effort they put in, and, and Chief Nunez and his department for keeping Los Alameda's a great city. Um, I also would like to say, I'm with Homeland Security Investigations, and our agents work 24/7. They really, they live in the communities, and they really work very hard to keep the communities safe. Everything from Child Exploitation Task Force, narcotic smuggling, money laundering, um...
Counterproliferation.
Counterproliferation, national security. Uh, we're the largest contributor on the Joint Terrorism Task Force. So we do a lot more than just immigration. And the agents really put their heart and souls into it, and they live in the communities, and they wanna keep our communities safe.
Well, you're appreciated. So there's an ultimate test. So, uh, I'm a military guy, and so is Mark. So, uh, at the very beginning of this process, he gave me a challenge coin. And so, the, there's a deal in the military, that if somebody gives you a challenge coin and you offer to give them a handshake with the challenge coin, if they don't have the coin that they also, what ends up happening, he has to buy me a drink. So, so, I didn't tell him this before, but I just, uh, it looks like you have to buy me a drink. All righty, cool. I knew it'd come in handy. So, okay, cool. Um, so thank you very much. Um, here, we'll get a picture here. All righty. Uh, next presentation we have, it's a presentation of resolution of support from Linda McDonald, President of the Long Beach Republican Women Federated, Nancy Hathcock, President of Rossmore Los Alameda's Republican Federated, and Pat Biggerstaff, President of Seal Beach Republican Women Federated. Would you guys come up here and join us? Hi, hi there. So I'm gonna let you guys see the talking, because I think you're giving us something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So whereas Long Beach Republican Women Federated, Rossmore Los Alameda's Republican Women Federated, and Seal Beach Republican, uh, Women Federated come together for this purpose of this resolution.
Whereas the Los Alameda City Council voted on March 19th, 2018, and final approval on April 16th, 2018, to exempt themselves from California Senate Bill 54, commonly known as the California Values Act, or Sanctuary City State Bill.
Whereas the Los Alameda City Council has led the way for other cities to pass similar resolutions and support a lawsuit filed by President Trump's administration against SB 54 and other California laws.
Resolve that on this date of June 18, 2018, that Long Beach RWF, Rossmore Los Alameda's RWF, and Seal Beach RWF recognize and support the Los Alameda City Council for their precedent-setting anti-sanctuary ordinance, leading the way for other cities to follow in their footsteps. We just want you to know that we are out there. We all support everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more for ladies and gentlemen. We never get these many supporters.
Yeah.
I'm on it.
There is now.
I'm on it.
One, two.
One, two, eight.
I hope I guys.
Yeah, we are. Okay, so we're done. Okay, we've got a, I guess the first presentation then we'll go through would be the report from Orange County Human Relations. Or do you, yeah, let's go ahead. We'll start with the Orange County Human Relations Representative for Presentation of the Annual Report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Chief Eric Nunez, and all community members. I'm here tonight to report on some of the work of our nonprofit organization here in the city of Los Alamos over the last year, and to present you with copies of the annual report, I'm sure that you've all have present now. We believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. And so in the last year, it's been a little difficult in our country, and we have struggled at times to remember that we are all united by our American identity. We have seen deep divisions and strife among leaders and even neighbors. However, at Orange County Human Relations, we have continued and moved forward with belief that we can all work together for a better purpose. So Orange County Human Relations believes that our mission to build understanding amongst our diverse residents is more important now than ever. And this relationship building contributes to a sense of community in our cities. Many of our programs are provided countrywide, such as our Hate Free OC, a public awareness and education campaign to create a hate-free environment in Orange County, bring diverse communities together, and promote peaceful, inclusive community where everyone can thrive. In the fall of 2017, launched a youth-focused campaign to educate young people about hate crimes and incidents. This campaign, called No Hate, logged over 1 million impressions online. But we would like to share with you today what we did specifically here in your city of Los Alamos, where we mediated 11 cases, as well as two family mediations in the courts or community where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Los Alamos. In collaboration with Los Alamos Police on Hate Crimes, and with individuals or community groups on hate incidents, we only had documented one hate incident in Los Alamos and conducted one police-community reconciliation case. We worked to build a sense of community amongst Los Alamos residents and staff through our continued hate crime education, victim outreach, and support. And in conclusion, Orange County Human Relations has partnered with many of the cities, especially Los Alamos, over the last 25 years, to bring police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods, develop positive relations among the broad spectrum of Los Alamos residents, and to address community conflict and strife, sustain a human relations infrastructure to circumcise cities when crisis situations occur. So we are proud of the longstanding partnership we have with Los Alamos and with so many other cities in Orange County. Together, we are contributing to a safe and respectful county and building the important relationships that can be called upon in times of tension and turmoil. So we thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Okay, so, City Clerk, keep me straight here. The, not on the agenda at this point was the presentation.
Correct.
Are we going to do that at this point, or no?
Yeah, the museum is item 10I on your consent calendar. They would like to do a presentation since it is a consent calendar.
Yeah. So Margaret, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and we'd like to get the presentation from the museum. So just as a form of the process here, is that this is just a high-level presentation. There is actually an agenda item in here, 10A, or, I'm sorry, it's, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Margaret Kendrick, and I live on 3231 Orange Wood in Rossmore. I have a presentation, a request to make for you. First of all, you see in front of you a picture of Orange County, and, well, it's already gone. And the next one is, I'm a member of the Orange County Historical Commission, and the request I have is not for the museum, but to plaque, with a commemorative plaque, the old fire station on the boulevard, which was the volunteer fire station number two in Los Alamos. It existed from 1946 until 1973, when the plant was moved onto, I think it's Green Street. Next, I want to speak about the Historical Commission. You probably don't know who we are and what we do. We are a citizens committee of 15 people representing each of the supervisor districts with three members. I have been originally, I was originally appointed by Harriet Vider, kept by James Silver, kept on again by John Morlock, and again by Michelle Steele. So I have a long life on that commission. And I would like to see this commemorative plaque on the orange, on the building, we have, on the building on the boulevard, because that is a 20th century adobe building, built because after World War II, there were no, not much material available for construction, but the need for volunteer fire station existed. And there were several of the same design and the same make in Orange County, however, only a few still exist, and none of them are a fire station anymore. I also like to speak on what we, the commission, are doing. We, let me see, got to take off my glasses. We were established in 1973 by the Board of Supervisors, and it came about because a group of citizens wanted to, the Board of Supervisors, to get involved with more history in the county, to preserve and adapt buildings, and encourage the identification and preservation and adaptive reuse of the historic buildings, and many of which, many of which date back to the turn of the century, the prior century, I mean. And with the adoption of the Orange County Historical Commission, we became, the board became involved in history in Orange County. At our monthly meetings, we, you look at the reuse of buildings, we look at the archives, which we helped establish, the Orange County Archives, as well as the paliantology of which the county is very rich, primarily from the Jurassic period. And we work with the Cooper Center and the University of California State College of Fullerton. We also work with Irvine, and so we are quite busy. We also have seven Orange County historical parks. And Mr. Kuzamoto was at the meeting, at the meeting last year in July, of which I couldn't attend. Our duties and objectives are to identify and promote the preservation and use of buildings, site structures and objectives, and stimulate and encourage financial and partnership support for projects, the public and private sector. We are coordinating countrywide, countrywide programs, and act as a liaison among local organizations. And we just did that in April down at Irvine, at the Irvine Agriculture Headquarters. And I'm always surprised seeing how many historic-involved organizations we have in this county. It is amazing. And we also developed and maintain a central file of Orange County historical resources for public use. We encourage and facilitate cooperation among local historical societies and organizations, which is what we did in April. And we accomplished quite a lot over the years. Our first accomplishment was to restore the old courthouse again for use, and we also have a museum exhibit at the old courthouse. We do the acquisition and planning of Orange County historical parks, including Heritage Hills, Irvine Ranch Headquarters, Key Ranch, Mocheska House, which is out in the Canyons, and Gardens, Peralta Adobe, and Yorba Cemetery. And Yorba Cemetery was actually the second historic cemetery in Orange County, after the mission, of course. And it was given to us in very bad shape by the Diocese of Los Angeles. I'm still mad at the condition that cemetery came back to us. Since then, the county has fenced it in, and some local organizations have looked all in old, have looked in old church records for who souls are buried there. And so far, we found over 400 and have plucked them. However, we don't know where they're buried, but sometimes an old gravestone still turns out of people who finally find that they were guilty of doing something.
Margaret, can I ask you a question? Because I know at the end of this, because this wasn't on the original agenda, you're really going to be talking about potentially asking us for a future agenda to basically designate historical condition for St. Hizidor or for the museum. I think that was where it's at. I just want to make sure that we know specifically, is that going to be the bottom line? Because the history is definitely important, but I want to make sure that the council understands what the request is.
Yes, the request is for a historical plaque, a commemorative plaque on the building, which houses now the museum. And it is because that building is still one of the historical buildings existing in the county and in the city. The first plaque, and it actually shows you the, as I mentioned before, it, the first plaque I established was for the original sugar beet factory in 1997. And this plaque would look similar to that at the sugar beet factory, at the location of the old sugar beet factory. And just remember that old sugar beet factory was the very first in Orange County, an established business of agriculture business in the county. It was the first in the county, and I was proud that it was in Los Alamos. And therefore, I'd like to make the second plaque on the old fire station, which is a 20th century adobe building, and represents part of your history, of the city's history.
Margaret, I appreciate that. And let me just save you there, because when we actually do that, I'm going to, as the mayor, I'm going to ask to have that put on the next agenda. And then maybe when we do that as an agenda item, this history would be helpful too, so that, you know, we make sure that we have the context. Because, you know, when we have a building like this that we put a plaque on, I know I'm involved with St. Hizidor, was something that we've also looked at there, pretty serious contemplation. So I just want to be able to give it its time. And if I put it on the agenda, we might be able to get more people in here that are interested in history, and so I don't want to waste this opportunity and not have the right people here to hear the story.
Right. That, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
And so that's why I make this request in behalf of the museum. And on the last page, you see how this plaque would look. And it will describe the old volunteer fire station, and the history of that is also on your, on the internet. And have you, do you have any, any questions?
No. And I really can't, the council can't ask you questions right now, because it's not on the agenda. We're just, I'm really personally excited about it, and I can't wait till we get it and come back.
And I'm happy, I thank you very much for your time, and I thank you for letting me make this presentation. Thank you.
You're welcome, Margaret. Thank you.
Mayor, in fact, Ken, just, as you mentioned, there is an item on the consent calendar, item 10D, related to the, basically the annual requirements that the museum is required to submit to the city. So as you mentioned, the historic designation ask or request is not there. But we could give a brief update on what the steps are now, or just wait till 10D?
Let's, let's just wait till 10D and see if there's any other council members that want to pull it. But I think the gist of this is that we absolutely cannot take an action tonight. So, and I just want to give the museum the direction that we will absolutely agendize this, and I think you'll find that we'll be pretty favorable towards it. But I think the item on the agenda is specifically to do with the budget and some of the things that are more tactical.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it, Margaret. That was the last presentation. I think at this point, what we'll do is, we're going to go ahead to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience can come forward and speak on any item that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Your comments will be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker, and I'll go ahead and open up for public comments right now. Thank you.
Falling apart up here. Go ahead and get started here. Mayor Troy Edgar, Mayor Pro-Tim Mark Kuzamoto, Shelley, Councilmember Shelley Hausenbrink, Councilmember Richard Murphy, and Councilmember Mark Chirco. As you all know, I've served on the, my name is Pete Carver Hall. I've served on the Los Alamos Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission consecutively since 2003. Since that time, I've served over a dozen different council members, several mayors, three parks and recreation directors, and several city managers. I have publicly supported and endorsed most of you sitting up on the dais tonight, and I've always felt that even though I may have disagreed with one of you, one of your positions now and again, I knew that deep down, we always had in common a love for the city of Los Alamos, and we always strived to do what was best for the majority, if not the whole of the city. Regretfully, this passion of mine to serve our community, specifically the children in our community, can no longer sustain my continued support of you as a council. Since March and April, your decision to pass a divisive and extremely partisan ordinance against the state of California SB 54, I have lost respect for the four of you who chose to vote for this, for this ordinance. Initially, I asked why. Why would you choose to bring such a nasty partisan debate into our council chambers? I saw the rudeness and total lack of decorum allowed to continue and fester, and I stood in disbelief as the council chambers was allowed to deteriorate into a celebration of extreme right-wing anti-immigrant behavior. Why? Other than Warren, who I too believe deep down felt he had to speak out against SB 54, the rest of your motivations were extremely suspect to me. Shelley, your argument that you were forced into this because you had to defend the Constitution does not hold water to me, as it is the federal courts that decide on the constitutionality of laws. Richard, your tepid vote in favor of the ordinance was in direct conflict of your statements and concerns. But the one person that I felt really drove this issue and allowed it to become a national news event was Mayor Troy Edgar. His statements that night and behavior since has convinced me that his motivations had been political grandstanding of the worst kind. The only person that asked the responsible questions was Councilmember Mark Chirco. So now, I want to lend in my support by asking you now, not the question why. I feel most of us understand the reason why. of us understand the reason why, but the new question, how much? I want to know how much of our city funds are being spent on defending the ordinance when in fact, the federal government is already attacking SB 54 in the courts? How much has been spent to date? I want to know this number. I looked at the warrants section of the agenda, and it's very hard and difficult to see. And I see a total, I estimate about $39,000 already spent in defense of this ineffective, and from your own words, "we don't have an immigration problem in Los Alamos," needless ordinance. How much more are you willing to spend? How much is your limit? At a time when our city is facing some very big budget liability issues, how much will be too much? I want you to take a public position on this. I think our citizenry need to know if you are willing to spend, quote, "whatever it takes," unquote. Because we may get to the point that your little partisan temper tantrum could very well cost our city some much-needed services, up to and included cops on the street. I have heard the argument that this is a public safety issue, but in reality, we don't have MS-13 in our schools and our streets. We haven't had an ICE raid in over a decade. You're spending money that could be spent on more cops and the safety of our city in defense of this ordinance that's unnecessary. Lastly, I'm extremely concerned that two of you that had the greatest part in pushing this needless ordinance will be leaving the council in the next year, and we will all be left to not only clean up this mess, but will be left with the damn bills that will continue to pile up. It is under these circumstances that I formally tender my resignation from the Los Alamos Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission. I can no longer serve a city council that would choose divisive partisan political issues over the financial health of our small city. Those of you who voted in favor of this ordinance should be forced to answer at every meeting, every month, how much of our city money are you going to spend? I'll pass along a copy, the signed copy of this to the clerk. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next up.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Monica Glickin. I am a local mom. I'm a member of Los Alamos Community United. I'm also speaking to you as an attorney with the Public Law Center, which is a pro bono law firm in Orange County that's seeking to provide legal services to our most indigent and vulnerable residents. In both of those capacities, I would like to talk to you about, also would like to talk to you about the costs of this Anti-Values Act ordinance. Mr. Carvahal talked about the financial costs. I would like to talk to you a little bit about the human costs. In both of my roles as a local community member and as an attorney serving those who are in our most vulnerable communities, I'd like to let you know some of the impacts that your ordinance have had. Because of the statement that this ordinance has made, we have youth in our own community who are afraid to go to school. We have parents who are afraid to bring their children into public spaces. We have families that are afraid to do simple things like going to work or going to the hospital. And if you are telling yourself that this is an ordinance that only targets so-called illegal immigrants, I'm here to tell you, you are mistaken. Legal immigrants, legal immigrant families, even families that are American citizens but with immigrant ties, have all felt the fear that this type of ordinance has sown in our communities. And most importantly, has felt the vacuum of the city council's leadership in speaking out against the hate speech and right-wing behavior that has been emboldened by the ordinance, not just at our city council meetings, but in the press. Where are your statements to our immigrant communities who are part of the communities that you are sworn to serve? Where are your statements to them that the police is there to protect them? Where are your statements condemning the anti-immigrant and hate speech that took place outside of your city doors, telling people to go home, to go back where they came from, that they should be deported, that they shouldn't be raising their children here? Where are your condemnation of those statements? This is the moral leadership that you also provide as our local city council, not just in passing, taking care of the very important work of keeping our city running. You also are the moral leaders of our communities. And I would ask you as a local community member to take that duty more serious, more seriously. It is not too late for you to rescind this ordinance, which is unnecessary. I encourage you to exercise your voice in all the other ways that are lawful within our democracies, such as passing a resolution, such as making, you know, having interviews, making statements. But why are you dragging our city into an unlawful ordinance which carries the force of law in defiance of a state law? It doesn't make any sense, and it is hurting our immigrant communities. I'd like you to think about that seriously as you consider how to proceed. Thank you.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Henry Josephsberg. You might recognize my name. I'm one of the plaintiffs in the case against you. I'm also a local business owner, and I've been a resident here since the 90s. Looking at what's happened here tonight alone affirms to me that this issue about the ordinance is really about your politics. You've invited the Republican women to applaud you. You've invited an ICE agent who provided apparently covert information to the mayor without making it public until tonight, and that he's in partnership with the city. I point this out because we started out this evening with a hearing about districting, which Mayor Edgar made gratuitous comments about, that he couldn't possibly know, couldn't possibly support with evidence, because we haven't had districting here. And Mayor Edgar simply went off explaining to us that, from his view, it's a fact that districting is bad. We've heard from Councilmember Murray how bad it is, and how it must fall, how if Sacramento gets its stuff together, it will reject this whole premise. Gentlemen, ma'am, you're wrong, because you are not speaking from fact in terms of what's going to happen in our city once we have districting. I would submit to you that with districting, this whole debacle would never have happened, because we would have had the opportunity to have different parts of our city elect different representatives to our council, rather than being elected at large, so that the majority alone in this city would ride roughshod over everybody here and inflict their attitudes, their lack of evidence, their points of view on the entire city. There is nothing in what I've heard from this city council that suggests to me any persuasive evidence that districting is wrong. No. What I've heard is overtly partisan comments, overtly right-wing partisan comments, if I may. There is nothing in districting that inherently is bad, but that's what I'm hearing from you, without a shred of evidence. I'm hearing buckets of partisanship. Reconsider this sort of presentation to us. You're all elected in a nonpartisan election. Why it is that you've brought this fairly ugly ordinance into this chamber, into my city, I don't know. I won't make any accusations, but I will tell you that it should be rescinded until we see what's happening in the federal district court, in the Department of Justice against the state of California case, and until we can district and have a city council that's responsive to the various constituencies, rather than having it, having us being roughshod, forced into having this kind of a ordinance that needs desperately to be viewed from all sides, not just one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Joel Block, resident of Rossmore. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. Want to talk about the immigration issue as it reflects on, as it impacts families. As you are no doubt aware, the media are full of stories about the new policy that has been implemented, resulting in the separation of children from parents. I bring this issue up because of the connection between the same philosophy that I believe caused the president to entertain you for political purposes in the White House. The same mentality is enacting rules that separate parents from children, and that is the mentality of politics. At some point, people are going to start realizing, in this council chambers, as well as in the White House, that what in the short term appears to be good politics, in the long term, is going to be a footnote in history at most. When we look back 20 years from now, just like we look back at Watergate, I was alive and mature as a human being when Watergate was going on, and I was one of the first people to move that the president resign or be impeached in my central labor council. I was booed down at the time. I was told I was crazy. This was before all the facts had come out, but enough of the facts had come out about the sinister nature of the Nixon administration.
Can I ask you something, Joel? So, public comment is to deal with things that are within the jurisdiction of the city council? Have anything to do with the Watergate thing, or anything else like that? Or even the parent and children being separated at the border? It's a situation?
I'm drawing an analogy. The politics--
Well, let's get to the point, because if not, then you need to sit down.
Politics drove Nixon to have the plumbers burglarize the Democratic Party headquarters. Politics drove you guys to bring in partisanship into a nonpartisan atmosphere by pushing an ordinance that you should have known, and probably did know, was illegal. Politics drove you to be invited to the White House. The common thread in everything I've been pointing out to you is that immediate political expediency is not the way to go. It never has been in history. It always is a loser. And the quicker that you realize that the citizens of this city deserve better than just political machinations. There's lots of ways you could have dealt with your concerns over the California Families Act without passing an ordinance nullifying that law. And now you're going to end up spending the taxpayers' money on it, and it's very unfortunate. Those of us who appreciate good government do not see it here. And that is what I, you asked me last time, why do I keep showing up? Why does Joel Block keep on speaking to the city council of the neighboring jurisdiction? It's about good government. And people like Earl Warren, a Republican, was for good government. He was against the political machinations at the time, throughout history. Eisenhower, similar attitude. It has nothing to do with what party you're at. When you get into political motives for adopting government policy, you are making a big mistake. And that's all I have to tell you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Josephsberg, and I am here, I'm a little bit confused, as I've listened to how much you support the federal mandates and things over our great state of California, it's a great state that I live in and I believe in. Why do you not also uphold the First Amendment in regards to separation of church and state? Why do we have "In God We Trust" above your head? And frankly, I'm here because I listened to one of the city council meetings to hear you say, after a prayer which started this thing, "shouldn't be happening." You said, "in Jesus's name." That's very offensive. Very offensive, not inclusive, it should not be happening. I would really like to see that plaque down and that not happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening, council members. My name is Barbara Farrell, and I live in Los Alamos. I go to church here, and I volunteer here. Before I start, I want to thank Councilman Nusamoto for offering the idea of 10 beds for homeless veterans in many houses. And I think that Los Alamos should step up and help to improve the homeless issue in Orange County. And I think that's just a wonderful idea. I am here tonight to ask, oh, first of all, you kind of said that you don't want to talk about the, anything but local government. However, you brought yourselves to Washington DC and involved yourself in bigger government. So I think all's fair. Thanks, Joel. I'm here tonight to ask that you reverse the anti-sanctuary ordinance. I could talk about our limited resources of law enforcement. I could talk about the waste of our tax dollars on frivolous opposition to the California law. I am talking about our law enforcement community, who needs our law enforcement officers, who help round, who are supposed to now help round up law-abiding immigrants in our churches and schools. Instead of doing neighborhood policing, a proven method, this ordinance destroys the relationship between the law enforcement officers and our immigrant neighbors. Today, we need sanctuary cities more than ever. The administration of the United States of America, whose zero-tolerance policies remove special status of Haiti and El Salvadorians who have been here for over 20 years. They canceled DACA, so now we have those people aren't legal anymore either. We have 242,000 young DACA recipients in California, about 130,000 in Orange County. A lot of them are going to schools. We need to protect the DACA kids, right here in Los Alamos. They also decided that everyone coming in over our borders, including asylum seekers, are criminals. We have an asylum law. They're not considered criminals. You come and you talk your case. We need to protect the asylum seekers. They decided that people fleeing domestic violence can't seek asylum. As a woman, I find that atrocious. We need to protect victims of domestic violence. They decided that people fleeing gang violence for their lives could not seek asylum. We need to protect families fleeing gang violence. Finally, they decided to treat asylum seekers, asylum-seeking families as criminals. And they tear the babies and young children apart from their parents to warehouse them in tent cities and actual warehouses. We need to preserve families, even if they are eventually deported. Our faith communities demand it. We need sanctuary more than ever before, and we should be part of it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am not going to be speaking about the ordinance. My name is Shelley Henderson. I'm editor of Orange County Breeze, but right at the moment, I'm wearing my hat as chairman of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to let everyone know that our next breakfast meeting will be on July 13th, in order to avoid the July 4th holiday confusion. We will be having, as a speaker, a labor lawyer who will expand and describe on the recent ruling on independent contractors versus employees. A recent court ruling has made it much more difficult for businesses to use independent contractors. For myself, for instance, I don't know how I can hire a, an independent contractor to design an ad for Orange County Breeze, because the ruling says that to qualify as an independent contractor, the work that they do has to be substantially different from what is done by the business. Well, we design some ads in-house. How do I distinguish between the in-house advertising design and the independent contractors? Am I going to have to hire an ad designer in addition to what we do? I don't know. So that will be our speaker on July 13th. Anybody who is in business and uses independent contractors should consider attending that meeting. In addition, I am wearing this stylish sweatshirt. In addition, I am wearing this stylish sweatshirt. As part of the advertising for an upcoming event sponsored jointly by Build It Foundation and by the Los Alamos Area Chamber of Commerce, it will be held at Laurel Park. It is the first annual Robo Drone Day. We will have drone races. We will have robotics demonstrations. We will have two food trucks, so you don't starve to death. We look to have lots of fun and lots of learning, not just for the folks who come in for the robotics demonstrations and the drones, but for us, so that the second annual Robo Drone Day can be bigger and funner. If you are interested in this, you may check the Los Alamos Chamber website, losalchamber.org for details, or if you happen to have a copy of the Dining Arts and Entertainment Guide for June, which is published by Orange County Breeze, it has details at the center of the publication. Thank you for giving me time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hey, Clavoe, business owner in this beautiful city for 42 years. I want to set the record clear that no one on this council invited the Republican women here tonight. The Republican women took it upon themselves to request to present the resolution that they did. Also, you know, I feel like I've got kind of a thumb on the pulse of this community. I have heard not one negative thing. I've even had people from other cities that have known me through business send in checks for the GoFundMe for the sanctuary thing. So I just want you to know that, you know, a few people get up and speak and act like, you know, you're blowing it all apart. You're doing great. We love you, and I could bring a bunch of people with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council.
Hi there.
Mayor Protim. My name is Monica Taramina. I'm 11-year resident of Los Alamos. I do not support your opposition to SB 54, and I'm here to welcome you all to a vigil that's being held on this Friday, the 20th... Oh, sorry. I'm here to welcome you all to vigil that's being held Friday, the 22nd, at 5:00 at Laurel Park, wherein we will be holding a vigil to keep families together, because families belong together. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? Sure.
My name is Robin Estler. I live in Cypress, but I have a pet sitting business with my husband, so we're in Los Alamos all the time. And I just want to thank the city council. I'm embarrassed that Cypress hasn't done it, and I want to thank you for taking the initiative, because it always takes one to start something, and you've started something really good that's going to be better in the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close oral communications, and we're going to move on to council announcements. Councilmember Chirco.
Sure. I was fortunate to participate in the last month in the hotel groundbreaking on Los Alamos Boulevard, which was great. It was my first time participating in one of those. Attended the budget standing committee meeting where we finalized the budget, a couple of public hearings regarding the change to voting districts, and I'm looking forward to participating in the Serve Los Al event, June 29th through 30th, where, you know, the whole community will be... Or a lot of people in the community will be volunteering. And then we've also got the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular coming up on Fourth of July, of course, at the Joint Forces Training Base.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy.
Hey, Chief. Want to make sure everything is okay out there? Or somebody?
[inaudible] It's not working right now. The screens aren't working. Everything else is still great.
Okay. So, Councilmember Murphy.
Okay. You know, I thought I'd been to a bunch of meetings. It turned out they were all redistricting meetings, so... I did attend the POA, which is always a great event, and we have to thank the Brewhouse and George. You know, George always comes up with something. He knighted two of our more illustrious citizens at this last meeting, Kenny Brandberry and John Osborne, for their great works in the community over all these years. So they are now officially Los Alamos Surs, according to the POA. I want to thank the school district. They invited us to the Los Al High School graduation, and my first thought was, "Oh, my God, it's hot, and I'm wearing this polyester robe." This thing was fantastic. The use of the unbelievably talented choir to bring a liveliness to it. It really... It was two hours, and there's a lot of grad... Over 800 graduates. It took quite a while to give them out, but it was really fun. And, you know, I think that's part of Sherri Croft's genius, is that she keeps it fun and keeps the energy going all the time. Also was able to attend the hotel groundbreaking and happy that they're getting started and seeing fit to invest in our community. I think it's a very positive sign. Troy has mentioned this several times, but, you know, our job as a city is to build the infrastructure and kind of build it, and they will come. And we're seeing that, which is very good for an older city that needs to turn over in a lot of areas. And glad to see we're making great progress. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hasselbrink.
I attended the chamber breakfast in June over at Griffin's Grill. I did attend the hotel groundbreaking. Got to dig my first hole with a gold shovel. That was pretty cool. Attended the Sunburst graduation two weeks ago over at Cottonwood Church. You know, the Sunburst program is an amazing program that's held over at the Joint Forces Training Base. They take approximately 200 kids voluntarily for a 22-week resident program and start them over again. And these kids are graduating from high school. They're getting caught up in high school. They're just taught all kinds of skills to live, and they're turned into productive human beings. And this is funded by the federal government, and it's just... It's a great program in our backyard, and I was very excited. I do want to make sure, because we normally have a tradition that we have the Sunburst Student Council come the month before they graduate to do the pledge of allegiance and kind of present them as well. I know it's a really big deal to them, and we didn't do it this year, so I just want to make sure that we stick that on our November meeting for the December graduation and also on the May meeting for the June graduation.
We had reached out to them in advance, so... And Wendy, do you have any... Anything to add to that? We did reach out ahead of time.
Yeah, just what Brett said. They had sent us a list of the graduating class for... To prepare the certificates, and we reached out to see if they would like to come to a council meeting, and there was no follow-up on their end.
We'll do it again for the next...
I'll probably nag him a little bit, because that means a big deal to the kids. I mean, they stand up behind us. They're part of our council, and that's a really big deal, and I don't want the tradition to go away just because they're not responsive. So I'll make sure that I stay on it as well. Did attend the high school graduation in my steamy hot robe as well. You know, we had the high school principal serenading us with his acoustic guitar and the choir's Do Up Girls, which was just amazing. We had three graduates that are going on to military academies. They said it's unheard of even to have one at a high school, but we had three this year. We also had 17 enlisting in the various branches of the military, which is great. We had 11 valedictorians that boasted a 4.5 GPA or better, so pretty demanding stats. I'd like to thank the school district for just including us. They invited the city of Seal Beach, Rossmore, and us to participate in it, sit on stage. We got to move diplomas around and shake hands with kids that we've known since they were in diapers, so it was as much of a thrill for me as it was for the graduates. And I do want to remind everybody that our first movie in the park is this coming Saturday night. It's going to be at Laurel Park. It's going to be Lion King. It starts at 6:30 with the live band Reckless, which is classic rock for our old parks. That's probably a good thing. And there's going to be food, and the movie starts at dusk, so it's free entertainment. And I just want to make sure, you know, it's going to be a hot weekend, and to be able to sit out there at one of our local parks and listen to some music, eat some great food, and watch a movie, you can't get better than that. And with that...
Good deal, thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. So only a couple of things. The West Cities... West Cities Comm, the JPA that I'm part of, I attended a special meeting, but I missed one of them as well, but we have a meeting tomorrow. The Los Al zoning code update committee, I attended that, and then I also attended the hearing... One of the hearings, the first of all, the hearing on the redistricting. So with that, back to you, mayor.
Yeah, the hotel groundbreaking was really, for me, something that I was really excited about. You know, we put about 10 years into getting Los Alamos Boulevard kind of infrastructure ready, and to see the investment out there and actually breaking ground was really exciting. I wanted to thank the developer and the Public Works Department, too, for working with them and helping them get through that process. In a year, there'll be a new structure there. And I know from a budget subcommittee, they're depending on that revenue within a year, so I'm hoping you guys will keep that on track. The Fourth of July, just continue to remind everybody in the community, it's a partnership with Cypress, Los Alamos, Seal Beach, Rossmore, and obviously the base. You know, we did the signing for that two or three weeks ago with Colonel Bond from the base. It's a really big deal. And last year, we had anywhere between 15,000 to 20,000 people out there, so we're looking forward to that. I wanted to thank President Barky, or Dr. Barky, there on the Los Alamos Unified School District, and his board of directors, and also Superintendent Dr. Sherri Cropp, you know, echoing everything that was set up here. You know, just after watching three graduations with my boys working their way through Los Al High, to actually sit up on stage and to be able to have that experience, and, you know, it was really the school board, you know, showing partnership and their view of "It takes a village." So I just, again, wanted to thank the Los Alamos Unified School District for the partnership. Couple other meetings. The Serve Los Al, I think Councilmember Chirco had talked about that, June 30th. It's going to be an event at the community center. And for some of us that have been around for a while, it's kind of interesting, so I really have high hopes for the... For that. You know, we used to have a solution, a partnership or solutions, which really tried to kind of get all the charities to work together. And, you know, since most of us on the council are very involved with a lot of the charities, I'm excited to see now we're trying it again, and got a lot of fresh faces on that, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for everybody to work together. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close council announcements and items from the city manager.
The council has hit on all three items that I wrote down, but I was going to ask Ron to give an update on all the Fourth of July, Serve Los Al, and movie and music in the park. I think everything has pretty much been covered. Anything else you want to highlight, Ron?
No. Good evening, mayor, city council... No, you guys are pretty awesome up there, but let's take one. City council member Hasselbrink said, "We have music and movies. Our first one's Saturday. It's at Laurel Park, but we also have two others. The dates are..." Let me look at my notes here. "July 14th at Oral Lewis. The movie will be Coco, and the band is La Serena. It's a Latin band." And then the last one for the summer is on July 28th at Little Cottonwood Park, and that's a Lego and N'Jago movie, and the band is Sugar Lips. So all the information I'm going to say is also on our website, so go visit our website. But like she said, movie... Band starts at 6:30. Movie starts around dusk, around 7:45, 8:00. The second one, of course, is Serve Los Al. We're really, really excited about that. That's on June 29th and 30th. We have an assembly scheduled at the community center parking lot. That's on Oak Street at 8:00 AM on Saturday, and I encourage the community to come out. We have all the nonprofits out there that are going to have booth, talking about their nonprofit. OCFA will be out there as well. And if you haven't signed up for a service project, go visit www.losal... Servlosal.org to sign up for a community service project for either a Friday night or Saturday morning. And right now, we're close to 200 volunteers for that day. So we're really excited about that. And then, of course, we have the Fourth of July. It's over on the Joint Forces Training Base, and that event begins at 4:00 PM. Parking is on the base. We do not charge for parking. It's a free entrance. And the fireworks show starts at 9:00. The... One of the things that we're excited about is we're working with the military, and they have agreed to do a fun area. So we can't have the inflatables like we've done in the past, but we can do family-style games, such as we're going to have like a pie-eating contest. We're going to have face painting. We're going to have balloon twisting for the kids. So there are some fun activities for the families to do that's not inflatable or bounce houses-type stuff. So come on out for either events. Again, visit the city's website, and you can get more information on there.
Now, Ron, could you talk a little bit about, you know, we have the race series that... We basically have the race on the base, and then the next up in the race series is in Cypress. So could you talk a little bit about that coming up in July?
Yes. So the city of Cypress has their community race. That's... I don't know the exact date, but it's in the end of July. And it's part of the race series with the three events, so the race on the base in Los Alamos to Cypress 5K and the Seal Beach 5K as well. So if you do all three of those events, you get a really, really cool medal. And if you're a racer and you're a participant, then that's the thing to do. The medal's quite large, and it's a...
Very large.
Yeah, it's a very nice medal. So, again, you can start at any of the events. You don't have to start at Race on the Base, which is in February. You could start at the one in Cypress, again, in July. Then you could... The next one would be Race on the Base in February, and then the one of Seal Beach, which is, I believe, in March. So...
So it's July 28th. And, yeah, so they also have a big pancake breakfast over there, really fun, a little festival, chili cook-off, all that. So definitely, by supporting them, you're supporting Los Alamos, too, because they basically help us draw people in for our race, too. So thank you. The one last thing I guess I had as a question maybe for one of you two was the... On the bike trail that we paved, I noticed that now both sides of the bike trail have been repaved by somebody else. I was just kind of curious if we knew... If we were familiar with whether the flood control districts saw what we did and then kind of jumped in.
That's right. LA County did pave the other side for their maintenance trucks.
Wow.
We couldn't get them to pave our side for their maintenance trucks, but they painted their... You know, paved theirs.
Yeah, it was interesting. I was running out there, and I noticed that it was... And it's not striped. Will they stripe it to match all the work that we did?
No.
Hmm.
Because it's not considered a bike path. It's only a maintenance area.
Hmm. Yeah, that's too bad. Okay. Yeah, that was pretty interesting to see. Also, a lot of people were calling, too, about the graffiti. Just wanted to make sure if you guys, you know, want to keep an eye on that down there, especially under the bridge. Is there anything else from staff?
No, sir.
All righty. Now we'll move on to warrants. Can I get a motion for the warrants?
I'll move.
Second.
All right. Roll call, then.
Mayor Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
All righty. Consent calendar. All consent calendar items can be voted upon by one motion unless the council member requests separate action on an item. Does anybody wish to pull anything off of the consent calendar? If nobody does, can I get a motion to move the consent calendar?
Motion to move.
Second.
All right. All in favor to move the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye? Hey, Marilyn, within the consent calendar, I just didn't know if we did have the item on there for the museum. I didn't know if there was anything else that you wanted to cover. Okay, because... Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Not a problem. Okay. Next up here is the public hearings. The adoption... This is 11A, the adoption of the city of Los Alamos fiscal year 2018-19 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Program budget. City manager.
Thank you, mayor and city council. This is the last step in the budget process for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and we have gone through a number of meetings with both the budget standing committee and the full city council. And we can... I will have the interim administrative services director, Maria Luisa Valdez, do a presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Hi there. Yeah, please.
So, yeah, presented for your consideration is the 2018-19 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Program budget for the city of Los Alamos. We are happy to present a balanced budget and its attachment 1 and 2 of the staff report. We were able to close down the budget gap that was reported in our preliminary budget workshop in March. We reported a gap of 102,830. We incorporated the new hotel development revenue in the budget, along with reducing the operating budget for $24,000 for the Fenley pump station. And the third thing to incorporate to close the budget is the increase in business licenses of $16,000. So we are reporting a surplus of $10,470. I would like to highlight that we haven't included the additional revenues associated with the user fee study and the suggested CPI increase, which we'll go over next in the public hearing. And the budget does, however, incorporate the recommendations approved in the organizational study approved by city council on May 11, 2018. So there will be no changes in the budget for that, incorporation for that fiscal impact.
Great.
Additionally, the budget includes annual dues for memberships. As part of our budget process, we've discussed the association of California cities, Orange County. So if the city council determines not to renew the annual dues, the general fund surplus will increase slightly for that $6,835. So we're seeking direction in the staff report as well to proceed with the membership and payment in regards to ACCOC. So that's it for the operating budget. And lastly, as part of the capital budget, the council, we discussed in our last budget workshop, we've incorporated all the capital projects, and we still have a balanced budget at the end of the day for our capital improvement program. We have a lot of projects that will benefit the entire community. We have the Fenley Pump Station, the generator, safety around the police department, like security cameras, and the bulletproof window and wall that were all discussed last month. But really, a lot of key projects that are good for the city and really benefit the whole community. And with that, I would like to just comment that, like to, due to a lack of quorum, the Budget Standing Committee was not able to meet, but we did meet with each staff member individually, so they can comment on any, you know, it was a group effort, and like, they really directed us to close the budget gap. So they're available for any questions, and so am I here.
Good deal. I'm going to go ahead and bring it back. I'm going to hear from the Budget Subcommittee, and then I'm going to open up for public hearing. So if I could, Councilmember Hasselbrink or Councilmember Chirco, could you give your perspective for the community as they watch this? You know, usually the budget is a big drawn-out thing, the end, it's a lot of, you know, opportunities and stuff. But I think if anybody's been following this, you guys have been doing a great job of going through these budget subcommittees. We've been having a ton of meetings, so this seems a little anticlimactic at the end. But the council would very much appreciate your perspective, as you guys have been the closest to it, and I'd just like to hear from both of you.
Okay, I'll be real brief. I don't want to steal all of Mark's thunder, as I technically try to do. You know, this year was interesting. We were brand-new on this Budget and Finance Committee, and we kind of sat in there going, all right, where do we start? And staff kind of led us down this path, really, so it's great. She's also new, so we were just kind of looking at each other going, all right, well, let's balance this thing. And, you know, I've got to say, all the departments really stepped up. They brought in some cost savings without cutting any services, without cutting, eliminating existing people. And that really played into it. It was definitely a group effort. We got a little creative. We were able to cut some things that weren't really necessary, and now we're going to be able to redo Labradet Park with brand-new playground equipment for, to replace the 20-year-old equipment. To me, that's great for the community. That's great for Apartment Row in that area. That is their closest little park. It's a park my boys went to every Saturday, so I'm very happy to see that happen. And, you know, this was a great experience. We got into $100 here and $500 there, and just asking questions, and staff always had the answers. And I'm just confident this budget is sound and good and realistic, and will stay balanced throughout the year.
Good deal. Thank you. Councilmember Chirco.
Sure. So I know we up here like to take credit a lot of times for things that happen. Well, mostly you four like to take credit.
All righty.
I'm joking. But, but, you know, we would go to these budget meetings, and seriously, the staff had everything ready and directed us, and we just asked a few questions here and there. But thankfully, they did such a great job sort of guiding us through the process, since it was our first time. And so they did all the heavy lifting, for sure. So I'm comfortable with it. I mean, the one, there is one area where, you know, our estimates don't really take into account attorney fees, and all we've got going on with the voting, switching to voting districts, the lawsuit, all of that. So it's something that we should definitely keep an eye on and do what we can to keep our expenses down. Because if you look at, for example, 2017-2018 budget, we're already, if you include this month's warrants, we're $146,000 over budget just on attorney fees. So that's some, you know, I deal with this at work every day, reviewing attorney bills, and so it's something, of course, I focus on, but it's just something that we need to keep in mind going forward.
Cool.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open it up to a public hearing. Anybody have any comments or feedback? We'd appreciate it. Hi there.
I'm back. Shelley Henderson, I'm here again as chairman of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, and I was listening to her fine explanation of how she closed the gap. They closed. I shouldn't just put it on her. And two things caught my attention. One was an increase in business licenses, so I have to ask for, if possible, an expansion of that. How are you increasing the income in business licenses? And then the other thing was, you're depending on the hotel opening. When is it expected to open?
I think we're charging Shelley's business, the difference, right? That's all from her.
Only if each of you takes out an ad.
No, that's, I'll do that if that's all it is. Yeah.
It's an election year. Everybody will be taking out an ad.
Yeah, can we address those two questions, please? Thank you.
So for the business licenses, we had, in March, had a preliminary budget, and we had incorporated, last year there was a CPI of about 1.7%. Now, conservatively, we, for 1819, we estimated that it would be at 1% as well. However, due to the CPI that we, well, we were able to get retrieved from the Department of Labor, they, it's actually at 3.7%. So we applied that, and that's the actual amount. So it's not like we agreed it. It's actually in our Muni code where we have that percentage, and we apply that to the business licenses. And second, so it's not, we didn't make that decision. It's in our Muni code. As far as the new hotel development, although it's uncertain at this point, we're thinking an aggressive development, that it would still open April 1st, 2019. That's pretty, yeah, that's what we've incorporated.
So April 1st is the answer, and it's no more, we're not forecasting extra businesses joining up, which is, I think, where Shelley was going, but it's the increase in the fees across the same...
Yeah, increase, yes. And the budget will change, continues to change, but with the hotel development, it still would be April 1st, 2019.
And just to add to that, we did talk to the Budget Standing Committee and to the council as a whole about alternative budget gap closures if the hotel does not open as originally anticipated on April 1st of 2019. So there are additional offsets that we kind of have potentially in our back pocket, and we would bring that up at the, with the Budget Standing Committee and with the council at mid-year.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Barbara.
I just want to, Barbara Farrell again. I just want to thank you for addressing Little Cottonwood Park. It serves the Apartment Row residents, and it will serve them better. There's a lot of young mothers that I see going up and down Farquhar, and in the early part of the day or in the later part, not when the Englishmen are out there getting burned up. So I appreciate it.
Cool. Thank you.
And then it's Labradet Park that's in the budget for 1819. It's in the CIP.
No, Labradet. It's Labradet Park. They have 20-year-old playground equipment, and so we're going to be replacing that, along with the rubberized, replacing the sand with the rubberized...
Circuits.
There you go.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? Yeah, come on up.
I just want to say that I, you know, Ms. Hasselbrink indicated that, I'm not familiar with all of what you guys are discussing with regard to the park.
Sure.
But to me, it's a shame that I'm hearing, you know, Mr. Chirco say, we need to, you know, be fiscally conservative and watch the budget because of how much money you're spending in attorney's fees and so forth, with regard to, you know, he doesn't necessarily support all of what is going on with the park or what's proposed. So it's just shameful, because this hurts our community, and we're spending money on issues that you indicated, Mr. Edgar, that aren't, that immigrants aren't an issue in Los Alamos. So this is one of the biggest concerns to us, that, you know, don't support your opposition to SB 54. It's just troubling to see that how much money is going towards something that doesn't, it's not the main issue, and the community is being hurt because of it. So from a fiscally, you know, from a fiscal perspective, so.
Can I ask you a question? So do you know how much of our budget we spend on police?
I don't.
So we spend, so just to give you an idea, so that you get an idea, because since you've said specifically me, 55% of our budget goes towards police. And so the sanctuary law thing is not about being anti-immigrant. It's about control of our police department. And I'm just giving you, I mean, we can differ on that, but I just wanted to give you a perspective. So to me, I want to be able to make sure that whatever future council is up here, they have complete control over their police department that us, as residents, and you pay for. So really, to me, it's worth every single dollar that we spend legally to defend that right. And I, no, but I'm just letting you know, because I think it's got to be a balance. It's not a one-way dialogue of just everybody continues to kind of have their perspective. I think you need to make sure that you at least consider for a bit what the perspective of at least four of us up here was.
Sure, but I would, again, I would say that that's a, the federal agencies should take care of the issues that federal agents are going to act out. So, but again, I'm hearing him, you know, voice his concern, so it's a concern to me as a resident of Los Alamos and as a mother.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other comment, bring it back up here. Is anybody else, Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, you know, somebody mentioned anticlimactic, and I want to, that's a good thing. My first meeting, when we did the budget, we didn't have any of these preparation meetings. We just showed up, and the wool flew, and it was, as a former CPI, I was horrified. In fact, something that Troy had been against and been outvoted 4-1 for $375,000, but he lost the issue in May, but in June, since that was our budget deficit, we just threw it out. We said, okay, the balanced budget now. We'd spent two hours debating the garage issue it was, and yet we completely turned around just because we needed to fill the hole, and people threw in their pet projects. And I, at the time, I really said, never again. And I want to thank, first of all, my colleagues for allowing the time it takes. We spend a lot of time. I'm proud when I tell other cities what we do on the budget. You know, we, we beat it to death. And the committee, you know, I know how much time it takes, but it really is, it really is a powerful position, and I applaud you both. It was a great job. Brett and Maria Luisa also, you know, Brett was the one who brought this to the city, the structure of starting way back in February. You know, it's, I think the way we budget is incredible, and the amount of time we spend is reflected, and it, you know, Troy and I have both said, now, you look at that 10-year projection, and I know once we get past this, that's going to become the next big issue. Hopefully, it doesn't get overshadowed by the immigration issue. The next 10 years, it's going to be, it's going to be wild and woolly up here for balancing that budget. And as those pension costs keep increasing, we're going to need to be ever vigilant and eventually take a stand somewhere. And I think Troy mentioned bringing, educating, starting to educate the public about what our problem is and what our possible solutions are. Because there's, the problem's pretty simple, and the solutions are not easy, but there's not that many of them, so we can select one and move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem. Thanks to Maria Luisa and all the staff for all of your hard work on putting the budget together. And the Budget Standing Committee did a lot of really hard work. And I'm, I also want to thank the full council for, as Councilmember Murphy mentions, creating that Budget Standing Committee almost five years ago now, and all the work that you guys have done. It's been, for staff, a fantastic tool, and I think the council as well, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Sure, and I'll kind of echo some of that past history. I know on the budget, I know what Richard speaks of, and I have to say, you know, we were not well cohesive as a council back then, and I know that, you know, the finest director that had been hired by your predecessor came on board, did the best he could, and in the blind, through something, you know, delivered a product that was very difficult for us to really comprehend in a very short time. So I think this process, you know, with the workshops and everything, has been just a really good process to incrementally provide all these different insights. And I think some of the restructuring that has happened, I know the Garage Fund has been a discussion for many, many, many times. I guess one question I do have, the city attorney, we have more than just two lawsuits, right? I mean, we had, we're sued for, there was a fatality on Coyote Bridge, and I think both parties are suing us. There were some other, can you, in rough terms, how many lawsuits are kind of, were being sued, you know, about now? I want to say less, around five? Does that sound about right? Handful, right?
There's a distinction to be drawn between claims that have been filed with the city and actual initiated litigation. So as, as far as lawsuits that my firm, for example, are handling, there is one.
Okay.
And then I think the Coyote Creek would be the other active litigation case at this point in time.
But the city's getting sued, I mean, right, in that one?
Correct.
By the survivors of that, the, you know, the, whatever, victim of that accident. And then even the perpetrator of the accident's also suing us, right? So there's a lot of lawsuits that are going on, for whatever reason, you know, people trip and they sue us. So I think to Councilmember Chirco's admonition about watching that, yeah, those are things that are just going to happen to us, and they do happen, unfortunately, because there are cities and counties that are viewed as deep pockets, that have insurance, that makes us just a target for litigation. So we have to watch that, but, you know, there are things that are going to be beyond our control, so. But I think with respect to this, the, the one thing I do like is the Fenley Pump Station that's near and dear to my neighborhood, so I know it's, we don't want that to fail. I'll tell you, back in 1995, in my old neighborhood, that pump failed, and I had a foot of water in my garage. And luckily, the house was on a raised foundation, and we didn't suffer any damage there. So yes, you know, that's a good thing. And then the generator here for emergency services, I think that's been a longstanding need, and I'm glad we're able to finally get that going. So with that, back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments from the, from the ad hoc committee at this point?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so kind of in closing, it seemed like there was a question to be posed with the ACCOC. Is that, is that a done deal, or is that, because I think it sounds like you need direction on that.
Yeah, we included, in the staff report, an item on ACCOC that had been brought up, I think, at one time by the Standing Committee and by the council as a whole. So we wanted to provide the forum for discussion. We haven't paid the dues for this fiscal year, and so it's about, as Maria Luisa said, about $6,800. So we, that's, that was the purpose for including it in there, and then we did, we did also ask for council direction on that item, if you want to stay as a member or not. That's basically the question.
So that'll be an item we'll have a separate vote for?
Yes.
Okay. So a couple things. So this is my last budget, so I just want to kind of give you a couple things to think about, kind of down the road. Definitely keep an eye on the Garage Fund.
We changed the title of that, by the way. It's the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. If we could just get that out there.
In the community, yeah. If you guys start seeing a lot of new police cars and utility trucks and all that, keep an eye on that, because the chief came in, definitely got that squared away under police, so we've been trying to be very prudent, looking at leasing versus buying stuff outright. But, but I think that that problematic area, or at least for historically problematic, ended up being an area we would accumulate a lot of money. In lean years, we would really take it from there if we were really short. And then in the other years, we would just sit on it, and that would build, and we wouldn't replenish the cars, and then we'd end up paying a piper at the very end. So the other one is the, what they'll call ISFs, or the special funds. And so there's probably 12 or 13 special funds in the city. They basically get funded through different things like gas tax, et cetera. And, you know, the way that it was set up in the beginning is that that money kind of got pushed flat across, and it was hard to kind of keep track. got pushed flat across and it was hard to kind of keep track. And I think the city's done a great job of now making it a visible kind of a portfolio that we can actually see where all the money is at. And then, you know, with districts coming into play, I really, you know, and again, I'm not piling on, the hardest part I've had as being a city council member was to be a team player when it came to stuff that you really wanted to fight for versus where the money was. And so you take into effect, for example, to get certain roads done, but you maybe have a road or even an alley that's in a hotel or the apartment area, you might be able to get some money from one group, like CDBG money from the county, then you kind of go through and you have to piece all this together. So I think, you know, this finance position is going to be so critical to try and help this new formed council that's going to be district-based make better holistic decisions, because again, this is unavoidable. And, you know, and I think that again, I, I hope that you guys continue to do that. The last thing I would talk about is, bigger picture has to do with the structural deficit problem that we're going to have five to 10 years from now. Because as Councilmember Murphy said, this, this is definitely something, you know, I, I talk about this and I'm absolutely not for it, but I will tell you, at some point, we are going to have to address, there's not new revenue sources. You know, I think Shelley Henderson, she asked the question about the business licenses, because I know what the answer she wanted. Oh my God, there's so many new businesses coming in, so it must be new licenses, and so the chamber, you know, hey, that means more people are going to join the chamber. But the reality is, we're living off of rate increases, you know, or, you know, increased fees. And, you know, which means eventually, there's two or three areas that we're going to have to start to take into consideration. Again, I'll be long gone. First area is sales tax, is we've got to take a look at that and know that at a point in time, if that becomes a desperate move, that's $2 to $3 million more a year that we would get if we had to do something like that, and God forbid we have to. But, you know, unless something really miraculously happens, we've got a fixed math equation that doesn't have a lot of move for structural change. The second area is utility users' taxes. So, you know, if you look at, you know, telecommunications, which we lowered in one year, Measure DD in 2012, but if you look, just for an example, for like electric, you know, for that tax, Seal Beach, somewhere around 12%, or somewhere around 6%. Most cities are more towards 10% and above. I'm not advocating again for taxes, but I'm just putting it out there, since I have no horse in this race coming up, is that that's good for another six to, $600,000 to $900,000 per utility tax if it's addressed and gone through the process. And so something that future councils might want to consider is that if something does get to a point of desperation and we go through that, you know, put it to the people. You know, don't make that something that we have to make a decision up here, but allow the voters to weigh in when the services start to become a point that it's untenable, when the first thing that goes away is going to be our ability to have parks and recreation programs, because we're going to try and preserve the police and fill potholes, the quality of life starts going down. When the senior citizen, senior center does not have or provide food services for the seniors anymore, and they're sitting over there and they really wanted to be able to be taken care of, or, you know, you go and you look at the parks and they're not going to be kind of taken care of anymore either. You know, when you talk about Little Compton Wood, which is a really critical park, which I actually agree with, Ms. Farrell definitely needs an investment, but it's, it's a math equation. So again, I'm not advocating for tax increases, but I, with complete dire circumstances as it pertains structurally leading ahead, I have been on for 12 years. I don't see mathematical fixes coming in the next five to 10 years, and eventually somebody's going to have to take on the hard decision of looking at taxes. You know, to address your issue, and I really apologize, I don't mean to be confrontational or aggressive when it comes to our legal fees and what's going into account for the sanctuary thing, but this will pass and it'll come in time. But, but the reality is that, you know, the other cushion that the community needs to be aware of is that we've got, you know, a, basically a general fund surplus of $8 million, approximately 78 million, that we would be able to harbor through good and bad. In 2009, 10, that $8 million started being used at $400,000 to $600,000 a year, because we were having a downturn in business and we ended up getting that down to almost 3.8 million. And then this council with the leadership of everybody up here definitely was able to get this back up to being a healthy reserve. And, you know, to answer the question, and again, of one of five, we are not going to spend $8 million on any sort of a lawsuit. We, I think we have definitely a level of control and self-discipline in being able to go through this. And I've said all along that, you know, we'll do this ACLU lawsuit until it does not make prudent sense, and every time we're evaluating whether, where we're at, where this thing needs to go. So, you know, I would just say, you know, for the community, if anybody's out there and they, you know, with Councilmember Churko, I think makes a valid point, you don't see us fighting him on that. I mean, he is the, the balance of our council. He's the person that, you know, through this process, even though we voted for one on the sanctuary thing, I would have to say that Councilmember Churko's been a very fair player through this process and has also provided as council, and we continue to have respect and appreciate it. But for, for the budget, like I said, I, I'm really, really concerned structurally, five to 10 years from now. If you look at what happens in La Palma, you look at what happens in Westminster, you look at what happened in Fountain Valley, they all came to the reality that they had to address this through a tax increase. And it's not something, but, you know, to be honest, look at our police staffing, look at our, you know, how we're starting to now put together solutions at the end here. We are holding off on hiring people. We've now, don't have a Parks and Recreation Director anymore, we've combined it into two managers. These two managers, Emlyn and Ron, are going to kick butt, the community's going to love it. But you know what? For 30, 50 years, 40 years at least, we've had a structure with a fully-staffed executive team that, you know, we're going to have to give this a try. Like I said, I, only reason I'm putting this out there is we are doing in real time exactly what the community needs us to do, which is to make the hard decisions. But there is going to come a time, probably in about two and a half, three years, where we're going to have to make some really big decisions. And I hope the council starts this PR thing, so it's not a shocker when we sit back, because in Fountain Valley, it was a shocker, you know? And Westminster was absolutely a shocker and it was misinterpreted, how they were on their way to bankruptcy. You know, La Palma lost, you know, so I think that I just, I would leave us with this, I really appreciate all the work. You know, we've all had an opportunity to be on the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. Jeff, there was a slip, huh? Brett? Yeah, yeah, another city manager. But Brett, I would also say again, as I'm kind of closing out my final bit with this budget, I just really appreciate everything that you've done to show the leadership through the transition, bringing in the interim folks. So, you know, I hope that, you know, for a longer term, permanent solution for how we're going to deal with a lot of these things, but I really appreciate it. With that, two things, I'd like to kind of bifurcate these and take them in separate order, because I want to make sure, the first item, Councilmember Hasselbrink, I'd like to talk a little bit about the ACCOC. We don't have to talk about it if we want to just put a motion out there on the floor and entertain a second, and then from there we can go. I would, that might be more effective, but do you have any preference on where to go?
To give a little bit of background, you know, I came in on the council almost four years ago, and there was a question there of whether we were going to continue our membership as ACCOC. And I committed at that time that I would actively go to the functions, participate in as much as that I could. And I did for quite some time. They've had some change in leadership, some change in services, and I'm not, at this point, I'm not quite seeing the bang for our buck. We pay more for those dues than we do for League of California Cities. League of California Cities is a statewide organization that's located literally across the street from the Capitol. They have a very, very loud voice up in Sacramento. ACCOC is great for Orange County. Some of the things that I've seen them doing is not in favor of local control, and I was a little bit concerned about that. The other thing is, one of their tools that they used to have, which was great, was a legislative tracker. And so at the beginning of every legislative year, about 2,200 bills are introduced between the Assembly and the Senate. And for us to comb through those to see what's relevant to us, not enough time in the day. And so they would put together for each city, a legislative tracker that would, they would identify these bills that were relevant either to our region or to our city or just to our quality of life. And we would be able to track those on their website to see where they were, to see when we need to send letters of support or letters of opposition. That tool hasn't been, I don't know if it's not available, it hasn't, certainly hasn't been marketed in the last couple of years. Most of their events now, there is a cost to go to, even though we're paying a cost to be a member. Most of their events are on a Thursday, Friday from nine to one. All of us here have full-time, well, except for Richard, full-time paying jobs.
He's just jealous.
I know. And so, you know, and we really try to represent ourselves throughout the county, and I think we all do a really good job up here. So, you know, $6,800 isn't a lot, but if we're not getting anything out of it, I'd rather just cut our ties and concentrate on things that we are having an impact on, where we are learning things and helping make our county and our city better.
Would, would you like to put a motion on the table, see if I can get a second, and then we'll just see if anybody else has any comments, because I want to solve that first.
Okay. I'm sure I, I would like to make a motion that we discontinue our membership with ACCOC.
Okay. Is there a second on the floor?
I'll go ahead and second, just for the purpose of having the discussion.
Okay. Anybody else like to make a comment specifically on the membership for ACCOC?
In general, on our memberships, I remember a staff report a few years ago, we laid out all the dues we paid. And I'd like to suggest we do that for the next meeting and give the benefits of those, give the benefits of each one, and then make a decision in July, if that's all right with my colleagues.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment?
I, I do have some, I have a, definitely a perspective on this, and I think when you alluded to some of the really difficult economic times, this was on the table, SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments membership was, and even the League of Cities. But I think a little bit of a historical perspective on ACCOC, as, as I can understand it, and maybe Mayor Edgar, you can kind of fill in some of my, you know, maybe, you know, misrecollections, but ACCOC came into being after the, kind of the dissolution of the Orange County chapter of the League of Cities, which was in place, and we were actually paying dual dues. We were paying dues to the League of Cities, and we were also paying the same amount of dues to the Orange County chapter of the League of Cities. And, and in a way, they kind of acted as that function that Councilmember Hasselbrink talked about, and they still do that today. I think I still see the emails from the Orange County's rep, from the League of Cities, about legislative issues that might be impacting the county and local governor, governments like ours. So ACCOC was kind of this, this thing that was created with this idea that it was going to try and expand statewide, and I, from my perspective, I think also be sort of an advocacy like the League of Cities, and they wanted to spread to other cities. And in some ways, I think it, it sort of was a temper tantrum by a group of folks in Orange County that said, the League of Cities, the Orange County chapter was not providing what they wanted. So I think they created this, this other entity, it went forward, and I think at the beginning, it really kind of matched what the Orange County chapter of the League of Cities was doing. Some of the training, some of the meetings, and even some of the city selection kind of, like for the LAFCO, those type of meetings that they would have. So all along, I always questioned why we needed to pay dual dues. I wasn't seeing the value at the beginning, because it was really more, I think, focused towards other cities in the county that really had some kind of a, an issue to really kind of take up to the state, and they were not getting resolution through the League of Cities. So I don't think they served us as well as they could have early on, but then, you know, maybe one could question whether Orange County chapter of League of Cities was also doing the same thing. That said, I think when we're looking at fiscal, you know, dollars going out, and I think you had mentioned Mark or Shelley, about watching hundreds and $500 kind of items on the budget in the, in the Budget Standing Committee, this is a significant amount of money as well. So I seconded Councilmember Hasselbrink's motion to, to actually kind of put it out there. And I think if we're not attending the meetings, if ACCOC is not really serving us, and we're not really engaged in, in participating, I think that's kind of the other part, maybe we ought not to be a member of that. And I think the latest thing that came up, I know has been a rural kind of issue on the whole homelessness advocacy that they've taken on, the League of Cities, I mean, the, the ACCOC. Well, in a sense, it's good to have, I think, a regional leadership in that. On the other hand, are they really serving the greater county well in terms of, are they listening to the inputs of all the cities? Now, I think Los Alamos, we have a unique situation where we have the base here. We have Veterans Services, we have the Long Beach VA just down the road. So we are in a really good location to offer those type of services as a, you know, for the homeless vets. And again, part of that, that you're on, city manager on that task force, the SPA, the-
Yeah, the North Orange County Service Planning Area.
Area. So, so that, I think we bring certain of that, but when I went to the ACCO meeting, ACCC meeting on, you know, you know, at the invitation of Mayor Edgar, who could not be there, it was almost like they were kind of forcing an allocation on all the cities. And so is that someone who really is serving us or really partnering with us? And that's, I think, the thing is, even if we weren't a member of that, at that time, we'd still have the same situation where, you know, what can you do, oh, Los Alamos, to help this homelessness situation? And, you know, again, our allocation were, was 10 permanent supportive housing, PSHs, somewhere in some unused piece of land in the city. And then think again of a tiny home kind of situation with all the services. So I think that, in a long way, I, I don't know that being a member has brought value to us. I think we've brought value to ACCOC, but not in terms of direct participation and advocacy. So I second that, and I'll, I guess we'll see what happens when you put it to the vote. Thank you.
Cool. Anybody else have any other comments on that?
I guess the one question would be, you know, is there urgency to do this now? I'm not hearing many positive or many reasons why we should stay in ACCOC, but if there's no urgency, I do kind of like Councilmember Murphy's suggestion that we take a look at all our memberships and, and perhaps decide at that time when we're comparing what each one provides.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, you know, my perspective is, I definitely watched this organization be formed, and I don't think that it lived up to its expectation. You know, a little bit of the impression I got on this homeless issue is that I kind of felt a little bit like they were being utilized almost as a lobbyist, and we were the extended staff for that organization, which is kind of opposite of what we're supposed to be. You know, they, they shouldn't be bringing these solutions and then having all the cities try to support it. I think, you know, we are trying to get together as a city to find a common ground and use them as a facilitation point, so we can kind of mesh with cities. So, you know, for that reason, you know, and to address, Councilmember Murphy, your view with SCAG and some of these others, I think, why can't we do both? I, I think that if we know now that this one's not working out, you know, and, and by the way, the invoices due was due like two months ago, so-
At least.
At least. And, and I do, you know, I have had inquiries, like, you know, I feel like I'm behind on my payments. So my preference would be, I mean, if we're going to do this, I'd be supportive of that, especially if, after listening to what I've heard up here, and we can't find that. But Councilmember Murphy, I'm very interested in, in your idea. You know, with SCAG, it's so bittersweet, because I was on SCAG for two years. But, you know, when I remember being on that board, and it represents Westminster, Seal Beach, a whole slot in between, I would actually go to the cities and put on workshops, talking about the regional plan, the regional comprehensive plan, the transportation studies. And I haven't, we haven't had a SCAG presentation from people in a while. The, you know, the one thing, you know, they put on the conference once a year, so we can kind of go there, but, you know, I, I think it was Westminster who dropped out of it when they were having really hard financial times, and they basically didn't pay dues. So that, that only meant that you didn't get to vote, but you still were able to participate, or at least be on the distribution for the material. So I, I would, I'd be very interested to support your action to bring the, all of the fees of the different organizations that we're paying, move that forward too for next month and take a look at it.
It's hard to keep them all straight. And last time we, you know, when you look at it as a whole, you realize the interaction of each one. That's why I didn't want to take one separately again.
Yeah, I can, if I can add, Mr. Ray, you may want to consider that hybrid, if you want to consider yea or nay tonight on the dues specifically for ACCOC, and then come back at the next meeting, we can update. We did that, like you have all said, we did it a couple of years ago, with all the dues, put them on the table, discuss all of them, and determine, you can determine that night which ones you want to stay in, or if there are any others that you want to move out. And then there could be additional follow-up, like request a presentation from SCAG or any of the other organizations. It doesn't have to happen all in one meeting, but just want to throw that out there. And then from staff's perspective about ACCOC, I really feel comparable to the comments that the full council has said. I will say that, in my opinion, the, the manager, the new executive director, has made improvements in terms of making an effort for that group to try to make a regional impact. But there are a lot of duties or their mission overlaps with the League of California Cities, as Councilmember Hasselbrink said. And the legislative piece, the advocacy piece is being handled by the League of California Cities. We get our updates on a regular basis. We adopt, or we support or oppose and have the mayor send a letter based on our legislative platform, and the league has tied in really well for us on that. And then in terms of networking, I mean, I think a benefit of both organizations is networking, but you can accomplish that from either one of the two organizations, it doesn't have to be both. And then from the, they are behind the establishment and the moving forward of this potential housing trust, which is a bill that has been brought forward by Daley. And, and I know that the council previously took a position in the resolution that was adopted related to that bill. And so, you know, we're right now on record as opposing that bill. They, again, I think they are making an effort to make an impact regionally, but as concerns have been expressed by the council, I have the comparable concerns on that potential housing trust that is being pushed through very quickly to try to get it on this ballot. And so those are my comments.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Brett. So in terms of meetings and opportunities, from your, you know, position as city manager, how much engagement have you had with ACCOC?
Well, there's, I haven't had a lot.
So, so again, so when we look at the elected, it's not really getting engaged, and then if you're not getting engaged, then we're just paying dues and we kind of get maybe a one-way transmittal of some- maybe a one-way transmitter of some information.
And from a staff perspective, the League can provide the legislative information and the networking through all the council and staff.
Tony's doing a lot of that for us from the Orange County, as the Orange County rep, he's doing a lot of that already, Tony Gardina, so, okay.
So let me just ask colleagues, I would like to be able to move on it, but I'm open, I guess, Shelley, from your perspective, time sensitivity, can I ask the SCAG one, didn't you already pay?
Yeah, there's several of them that we've paid, I mean, and based on previous direction from the council and really being fully supportive, as, you know, not all five of you were on the council at that time, but we, there are certain ones that we have paid, and we will, if we bring a staff report back to the council, we'll let you know which ones we have paid and haven't paid, we haven't really held back on any payments other than ACCOC, but also, it would be a forum to provide direction for future, if it's not this year, it can be next year if we have already paid it, most of them we've already paid.
Okay, so-
My energy, something real quick, you know, if we do, and I like the idea of looking at all organizations, I know it was listed in one of our budget workshops, it listed all of our associations and the annual dues that went with it, but I think what's helpful, because I know four years ago, when we were talking about ACCOC, council wasn't real engaged, I got more engaged to some point, but staff was really engaged, so what I'd like to see is, you know, SCAG and the tools that you benefit from, from SCAG, because it might not be us benefiting it, but it might be you guys benefiting from it as well.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So if you could kind of give, you know, your pros and cons about being members at a staff level, then we can kind of assimilate what we get from it as well, and then make an overall educated decision on future of all those decisions.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Okay, so we got, first of all, any other comments? So the motion on the floor, I guess, you know, I would like to be able to go through and see if we can get just total consensus, I guess I would ask the maker, and the second, do you have an issue waiting a month to get it all comprehensively?
If you don't mind getting the past due emails.
Including one today, actually. Yeah, I know, I, yeah, well, I, like I said, if they've waited three or four months, they could wait one more month, but I want to, I'd really like to get the council together, and so we have this unified voice on, because these are really important items, I'd like to take them to, you know.
So what might I suggest, though, can we invite both ACCOC, the rep, and then the SCAG, as well as League of Cities, so you just get them all here, but maybe not, well, I guess this meeting is fine, over the July meeting, one of the opportune meetings to do that, to kind of, you know, let them sell it.
Yeah, that would definitely be a possibility, especially because I did get an email today from ACCOC, so if that's the direction of the council, I will let them know tomorrow and invite them to the next meeting.
Do we have any contact with SCAG, because I know Kevin Gluey got transferred over to doing something different now.
I know, I know his boss, so I can talk to him, but, yeah, he would be the one coming to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll just direct staff to bring the schedule back for next month, and I guess in the budget, which we'll vote on now, the budget will have the fees accounted for at this point, correct?
Can we withdraw the motion?
Yeah, so go ahead now, we'll withdraw the motion, can I get a withdrawal?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, good deal, so now let's take a look at the budget and the, can I get a motion for the existing budget that was presented tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I don't need a roll call bid on that, correct? Or would you prefer?
Let's do one, just to be safe, I can't recall offhand.
Okay, that means Wendy is at a breakpoint. Okay, so go ahead, have a roll call vote.
We have Mayor Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Sorry, Mayor Protem Kusamoto. Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
And Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Good deal, okay, so next item here is the City of Los Alamos Fiscal Year 2018-19 Master Fee Schedule Update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, the Interim Development Services Director, Andy Perea, will do the staff report on this one.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. User fees are charged by the city to an individual that will directly benefit by that service. These fees shift the burden away from the general population of the city to the individual that receives that benefit. Some of these types of fees include building permits, CUPs, alarms, recreation classes. Prior to developing a fee, a study must be done to determine the city's actual cost to provide each service. A city cannot charge more than the cost to provide the service. In 2015, the city retained services of NBS Consulting to prepare a comprehensive fee study. That study was completed and approved by the city in July of last year. Before this evening, our fees that were adopted last year were the proposed 3.8 CPI adjustment with a few changes to the existing fee schedule. These changes are primarily in the Development Services Department, and they include fees based on recalculated amounts supported by the NBS-approved study, and staff retabulations, and approving adjustments that eliminate, reduce, and modify other fees and charges. Included in the proposed fee resolution is a policy that requires an annual review and update of the fee schedule that incorporates the CPI. This policy is consistent with the recommendations of the NBS consultant and to keep pace with the cost of inflation. The proposed fee update has been presented individually to the members of the Budget Standing Committee. If approved, these fees will go into effect in 60 days, so April 18th, and would add revenues of about $21,000 to the city's budget. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Great, thank you, let me go ahead and bring this back to the council, let me just look here, does this also have to be opened up for public comment?
It's a public hearing, yes.
Yeah, so anybody in the public wish to make any comment on this? No, not at all, okay, so we'll bring it back to the city council, and we'll go ahead and have an open discussion up here. Would anybody like to make a comment on this?
Yeah, I mean, we reviewed this during the Budget Standing Committee, as Andy mentioned, and it all made sense to me, it all, it's all very logical. I guess the one, the one issue we did discuss is the valuation-based inspection fees, you know, if you take a look at those, those are kind of, you know, they, it's a, it's an amount of, let's see here, $29 for each $1,000, between $25,000 and $50,000, and then it goes, you know, for the next, next amount, for anything over, up to $100,000, it goes to $10, then it goes down to $4, then it goes back up to $5, then it goes up to $6. You know, if a resident's trying to make sense of this, it's a little bit confusing, and I know we talked about in future, you know, in the future, we'll bring some clarity to that and some consistency to that, so.
Right.
I just thought I'd mention that, since that is potentially an area of confusion for our residents.
Right. I'd recommend that before next year's budget cycle, that the consultant relook at these numbers, and the methodology, in my opinion, is correct, but I'd want her to go back and check the methodology and her numbers for the multiplier, and make sure that she's still comfortable with those numbers that she presented to the city.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'll move it.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second.
All right, I think we'll have a roll call bid on this one.
I want to be last.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Edgar.
Aye.
Okay, next up, 12A Personnel Changes Related to the Organizational Study, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, this is an item that's related both to the adoption of the budget and the implementation of the organizational study that was previously approved by the City Council on May 11th, and so the items that are before you include job descriptions and salary resolutions of those new positions that were approved by the council as part of the study, and the salary resolutions in total for both the non-represented group and the Teamsters Association, and so this is something we bring forward with the budget adoption every year for the council consideration, and this year it does also incorporate the changes that were approved in the organizational study.
Great, thank you for the staff report, anybody have any questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Next item, 12B, this item is a request for Attorney General Becerra for roundtable discussion, this is an update that I just wanted to provide, if you'll notice in the package, I think, let's see what the date of the letter was, on May 31st, I sent a letter off to Javier Becerra, the Attorney General, just requesting a town hall discussion, very similar expectation of when I sent off the president letters, that wondering if they would respond, we actually got a fairly quick response saying that they were interested, they were going to check their scheduling and go from there. Since then, Friday, I think it was, Wendy, we did get direct coordination with Becerra's office, which they basically let us know that they were not going to be able to have a discussion on this item. So I think what the hope was, this expectation was, a little bit of really just trying to be able to look and see with, you know, Becerra's focus on this, and some of the things that he said, is to really use this as an opportunity to educate the community a little bit, also to talk about this from when we say it's a roundtable, just to get a perspective, if you read the tense or the kind of the context of the note, it was really, in kind of a humble way, please explain to us from your perspective, you know, so that the community can understand that. At the time that I put this on the agenda, what I was hoping to be able to do was to be contemplative, because I was very encouraged that we did get a preliminary view, that the schedulers were actually looking for a time for Becerra to come down, and what I started wanting to think about is that if we were going to actually do this, I wanted it to be something that, you know, when they would call down and say, "Hey, look, what type of forum is it? Where would this forum be? What would be the format of this forum, and how would we ensure that it was something that would meet an expectation of our community?" And all of those questions, I felt were more appropriate to come and bring this to the open city council to have a discussion with all the council members. Now that we've got the determination on Friday that this is off, I just, again, I guess I would put this out there, any comments or thoughts, obviously, we're not planning it, there is another candidate that's running now against Attorney General Becerra, who's Judge Bailey out there, and so I didn't know if this would be an opportunity for any sort of a forum, but I just, I guess I just wanted to put it out there, and if not, then we'll just close this off in the same way that it was brought up. With that, I'll bring it back to the council and see if anybody has any comments.
So I'll go, thank you, Mayor, so I know that, I was keenly interested in this, and we had discussed that after your appearance in one of the news programs, where you had made the invitation to Attorney General Becerra, and I thought that would be a really good thing, because I have heard him say many, many, many times that SB 54, the California Values Act, is designed to work in concert with the Constitution of the United States, which is really what we took exception to, so I looked at that as an opportunity for us to get educated, and maybe as members of the public had asked us to reconsider, you know, this ordinance that we put in place, maybe after this interchange with Attorney General Becerra, we might come to that realization that, yes, maybe we overstepped and went a little bit too far, so that's kind of how I looked at this thing, and I still think it would be a good thing to continue this on in some fashion, if we can have a community forum, we can still make the invitation, establish a date, and see if there's any kind of, you know, feedback, because maybe that would be appropriate, and maybe the Attorney General, and maybe the opponent of the Attorney General, would come here and help us understand the California Values Act, and how it works or doesn't work in concert with local control, protecting the public, and even the rights of both, you know, the legal immigrants and the illegal immigrants, who also have whatever rights that they're afforded, I know when they cross the border, they get some kind of due process, and understand all those issues, but I think that I'd like to see us at least try and set something up, and maybe if we build a forum, maybe they'll show up, maybe they won't, but that'd be my kind of input to this council, and I'll listen to the discussion, thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I'd be a little bit concerned about inviting Judge Bailey, just because he is running for election, and I don't want it to turn into a political platform, he doesn't have the authority or the power to really explain SB 54 from an insider standpoint. The one thing I would be interested in doing is if Attorney General Becerra isn't interested, maybe extending the invitation to Daley on, who authored SB 54, just to kind of understand outside of what we see in the media, kind of his reasoning for it, maybe doing something like that. He is up for political office, so it, a different office, but I think if we really want to be transparent and really do this educationally, we can't be afraid of inviting the author of the bill as well.
Okay, good deal. Does she have any comment?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, well, I think at this point, it doesn't appear like there's going to be a need for further action on this, so, I mean, at this point, I think we'll go ahead and just receive and file this item, so, thank you. So the next step is closed session, and I guess City Attorney, if you could just read us into closed session, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor, the City Council now adjourned to closed session to discuss items 13A through F as listed on your agenda.
Okay, and go into closed session.